Yeah. For your experience, you're the mayor, so you can do whatever you want. If you're asking tradition, which tradition is, you know?
Welcome Vice Mayor and council members. I call this special meeting of Albany City Council for September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four to order. City Clerk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Hansa Romero.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Tiedemann.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Here.
And Mayor Mickey.
Here. And we'll move on to item two, closed session, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section five, five-nine-four-five-seven with regards to the Albany Police Officers Association. And with that, we'll go to closed session. Oh, sorry, public comment?
There are no one online, no one in the room?
Yeah.
Welcome, everyone. Welcome, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I call this regular meeting of the Albany City Council for September 3rd, 2024 to order. Lopez, would you read the land acknowledgement? Sorry, Vice Mayor Lopez?
City of Albany recognized that we occupied the land originally protected by the Confederate villages of Lejeune. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloneye tribe. We thank them for their contributions which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commit to sustaining ongoing relationship with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Lady Clerk, can you call, roll please?
Councilmember Hanson Ramara?
Here.
Councilmember Jordan?
Here.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Here.
And Mayor Mickey?
Here. Here. A report on actions taken in closed session. We had a closed session earlier today. There are no reportable actions from today's closed session. I will move on to item four ceremonial matters. Item four dash one, Proclamation, American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month. Councilmember Tiedemann?
Proclamation and recognition of American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month, August 2024. Whereas the City of Albany takes great pride in supporting individual religious freedoms and is strengthened by the many varied religious, political, and cultural traditions and contributions of its diverse population, including those that practice Islam. And whereas Muslims have been part of U.S. history from the beginning, contributing to the construction of the nation and advancement of the civil rights movement. And whereas over ninety thousand Muslims live in Alameda County and make innumerable contributions to the cultural, political, and economic fabric and well-being of California and the United States. And whereas in 2023, the Council on American Islamic Relations received six hundred and seven complaints of hate crimes or hate incidents, a four hundred and nineteen percent increase from the previous year, and over eight thousand complaints total, the highest ever in its thirty-year history. And whereas members of the UC Berkeley Muslim Student Association Community Services and Political Action Committees have successfully been awarded three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in grants to help expand the Bear Pantry to better serve the over three thousand residents of UC Village. And whereas the A2Z Foundation was established in 2014 to serve the Bay Area community by improving access to healthcare and expanded their services to provide over thirty-five thousand pounds of food, including fresh produce and shelf-stable items to Albany families. And whereas Brother Abdul Jalil Al Hakim and Brother Bilal Saleh Esri families, and whereas Brother Abdul Jalil Al Hakim and Brother Bilal Saleh Asa were instrumental in supporting the Albany community as part of the Aaron and Margaret Wallace Foundation, providing food, hygiene supplies, and hot meals to residents of Albany in the Bay Area, and whereas Brother Bilal Saleh Asa tragically lost his life on September 19th, 2022, to senseless gun violence, but has left a legacy of support for underserved communities through his service, family, and loved ones, and whereas Albany resident Talia Mermalek, a civil rights activist and lawyer, has advocated for workers, tenants, and immigrants in Albany and surrounding communities by offering pro bono services at the Central Legale de la Razza's Workers and Tenants Right Clinic in Oakland, the Afghan Humanitarian Parole Project, and the East Bay Community Law Center's Immigration Clinic in Berkeley, as well as co-founding Law Students for Radical Real Estate, the Free the Land Project, and played an active role in Afghan Humanitarian Parole Project, and whereas the City of Albany has elected Muslim Americans to lead our community, including current Albany School Board member Sidi Akhan, who has facilitated advocacy in numerous ways for housing and educational equity for families in Albany, and whereas it is appropriate to acknowledge and promote awareness of the myriads of invaluable contributions of Muslims in California and across the country and provide them the respect and acknowledgement every person deserves. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the Albany City Council does recognize the California State Designation of August 2024 as American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month, to acknowledge the rich history, contributions, and guiding virtues of Muslims, and to commend all Muslim communities in California for the lasting positive impact they have made towards the advancement of our city and country. Have anyone to accept this? If you'd like to say any words?
Hi, everyone. It's nice to see you guys all again. So, yeah, so as a Muslim-American Albany resident, I just wanted to thank Albany City Council for this proclamation. I've been living in Albany for about 10 years now. I'm raising my two kids here. Albany is all that they know. My son just started at Ocean View, and, yeah, the city is a piece of me and my family, just as much as I am a piece of it. So, yeah, so in line with this idea of the beauty of diversity, I just wanted to share a verse from the Quran that highlights that. It's from chapter 49, verse 13, and this is a translation from the Arabic. It goes, "We made you into nations and tribes so that you may know each other, not that you may despise each other." And this is at the core of being a Muslim, that differences and commonalities that exist in humanity should not only be embraced, but also be a source of knowledge for us. Yeah, also being a source of knowledge for us, yeah. So, we can learn so much from each other, from our siblings and humanity, and that is a guiding principle in Islam. So, in being part of Albany's beautifully diverse community, I look forward to continuing that embrace and that exchange and getting to know each other. So, thank you all.
Item four dash two, proclamation for National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and I'll be reading this proclamation.
In recognition of National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, September 2024. Whereas September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, a time to remember the lives lost to suicide, acknowledge the millions more who have experienced suicidal thoughts, and the many individuals, families, and communities that have been impacted by suicide. It is also a time to raise awareness about suicide prevention and share messages of hope, promoting prevention resources available to the community. The goal is to learn how to help those around us and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas suicide is a complex problem with no single cause and no single solution, suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, sexual orientation, or identity, income level, religion, or background. And whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, an average of more than 46,000 people have died by suicide each year for the past year, for the past 10 years, and whereas suicide is the 11th leading cause of death among adults in the U.S. and the second leading cause of death among people ages 10 to 34. And whereas education tools for suicide prevention are available through Crisis Support Services of Alameda County at www.crisissupport.org, and the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration at www.samhsa.gov. Through these organizations, anyone can learn how to support someone considering suicide, and whereas a nationwide three-digit number, 988, for mental health and suicide crisis, has been implemented, connecting people in crisis with trained crisis counselors in the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline Network. In addition, the 24-hour Alameda County Crisis Line is 1-800-309-2131, where trained crisis counselors are available to receive crisis calls and give support. And whereas the City of Albany, California, is no different than any other community in the country, chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, recreation leaders, public safety personnel, and parents, as partners in supporting our community and simply being available to one another. And whereas local organizations like Crisis Support Services of Alameda County and the national organizations like National Alliance on Mental Illness are on the front line of a battle that many still refuse to discuss in public, a suicide of mental illness remains to taboo, a topic to speak on. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life's struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas the City of Albany would like to acknowledge and recognize Crisis Support Services of Alameda County for their ongoing commitment in the county to reach out and offer support to people of all ages and backgrounds, with a broad range of counseling, education, and preventive services in a safe environment. The 24-hour crisis hotline responds to more than 65,000 calls each year. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the City of Albany Council does hereby recognize the month of September 2024 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the City of Albany, and encourages all residents to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few days, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer.
Thank you so much. I just want to say, I'm Narja Stell, and I'm the Executive Director of Crisis Support Services of Alameda County, and actions like this mean a lot because they're part of the broader stigma reduction work that needs to happen at every level of our communities in order to make it okay for people to talk about it when they're having a hard time or when they've lost a loved one to suicide. So, I really appreciate you all for saying the words, using your mics here to increase awareness around the fact that suicide doesn't discriminate and it does impact people throughout our communities. Thank you.
I'll ask if any council members would like to say anything on either proclamation, or if there are any members of the public that would like to say anything on the proclamations today. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming today for the proclamations. In particular, four dash two has very personal meaning to me and my family. And if you have any questions or if you want to talk with anyone, please feel free to reach out to me. With that, we'll move on to item five, City Manager Report. City Manager, may the council have your report?
Thank you, Council. And Mayor, Vice Mayor, welcome back from your August recess. I know recess doesn't necessarily mean freedom, and I think that my report tonight reflects how busy staff has been, and I certainly know council members have been as well during election season. So, I appreciate your continued work in shepherding through all of the initiatives our city is currently pursuing. A 2024 election update is first on my list here. Again, a reminder that we house all information regarding our upcoming election on our website, albancyc.org/election is the short link. This includes candidates, local ballot measures, information on ranked choice voting, and is updated regularly as new information is available during that season. Currently, it's fairly static because everything has been fairly set at this point. The next thing that the community should expect to receive is your vote-by-mail ballots, which will start to be mailed out to registered voters on October 7th. Again, as cited on our website and also accessible here through our city clerk, any questions, we are readily available. Ideally, best communication is through email to cityclerk@albancyc.org. If you've been around Memorial Park recently, on our evening concerts in the park series, you have had the opportunity to enjoy two Wednesday evenings of concerts. Two more to go, so if you've missed the first two, we also have one on September 4th and September 11th. These are highly sought out by our community, and it seems like really being enjoyed. Our staff counted about 500 people, family, and friends, and neighbors at each of the events. So, really happy to bring these back and be able to celebrate together at our park. These are held at Memorial Park, and they start at 6:00 p.m. while the season allows for it to still be light enough to have these. So, please enjoy that opportunity. As I was wandering down San Pablo Avenue today, it occurred to me it would be important to underscore all of the transition occurring on the avenue. In terms of pedestrian safety improvements, you'll see these along San Pablo at Brighton, Castro, Garfield, and Portland Avenue. The work includes ADA-compliant curb ramp construction, crosswalk relocations, pedestrian refuge islands, and high-visibility crosswalks. There's also an audible pedestrian push button, and installation of solar flashing beacons at the intersections of Castro at San Pablo and Portland and San Pablo. And in fact, as reported by staff today, the installation of the flashing beacon started today. So, that work is well underway. Really looking forward to seeing it completed and realizing that San Pablo has been a bit harder to navigate in the last couple of months. So, appreciate the community's patience as work has been ongoing to improve, including work by East Bay Mud underneath the road. Almost there. Interestingly, and connected to that update, Pedestrian Safety Month is September, and you may have seen our police department issue some community notifications regarding pedestrian safety, especially with regard to the schools returning to session in mid-August, but also as they continue to walk every day in our community. So, really just a reminder to slow down and watch for pedestrians because we have a very active community, and it's just in everybody's best interest for safety. The Solano Stroll will be this Sunday, September 8th. Do not miss this once-a-year event. Always a wonderful turnout of our community and folks from far beyond our community. Welcome to Solano Avenue to celebrate together. It will take place this Sunday from 10:00 to 5:00, and it will be the 48th Annual Solano Stroll. There will include a parade, hundreds of vendors, entertainers, anything you can think of really to enjoy on the avenue. So, don't miss that event. The Chamber of Commerce is hosting the annual Best of Albany. Please take the opportunities to support our local businesses and vote on your favorites of Albany. I went through the INC. questions, and it's pretty straightforward. You just fill in the blanks and give your reasoning. Doesn't take too long and really helps support your local businesses. So, please voice your favorites. We also have Coastal Cleanup Day right around the corner on September 21st. This is at the Albany Bulb and Beach Area. It's an annual event, and it will occur September 21st, Saturday, from 9:00 to noon. Hundreds of volunteers usually turn out, and it's our opportunity to give back and really help continue to improve the ecology and sustainability of our local watershed. The Triathlon, another community event, will be held on September 22nd. This is a centering around Memorial Park, supports our local schools, and is a great opportunity to get some exercise along the way. So, look for this event and many other events, as I'm reading here. Taste of Albany is also occurring on the same day, hosted by the Albany Rotary, on September 22nd, from 2:30 to 5:30. This will be along Solano Avenue for a taste from local businesses that are participating, with music and some other activities. So, another fun event to enjoy in celebrating Solano Avenue. Their website is tastefalbany.org. These are also centered around Albany Local Week, which you will soon see a lot of posters and outreach for. So, there are a myriad of things to do within the September period to celebrate our community. I'd like to also remind folks that we have an opening on our Housing Advisory Commission. This is for the seat of a renter. We are really looking forward to getting applications to fill this remaining seat so the work of implementation and conversation around important topics within our housing element can occur. So, please look at our website. For the Housing Commission, it's a simple online application, and looking forward to getting that seat filled. And another popular event that I will probably announce a few times, but just a first plug, the Albany Fire Department Pancake Breakfast in open house will be on October 12th. You'll see our banners up along the area, and this is an important event. It's not just a pancake breakfast, but also a fundraiser for the Elisa Ann Rush Burn Foundation, held every year by our fire department and well-received every year. And also just wanted to note, as questions have come up about the future of Golden Gate Fields, without answers necessarily all of the time, to which I appreciate and understand the concern around, we will be planning to have a study session with the City Council in October. Tentatively, October 21st will be the date of that study session, really an opportunity for community and City Council conversation on this topic and ideas for the future of that property. And that completes my report.
Thank you, City Manager. If anyone attending would like to ask a question about or comment on City Manager Report, please raise your hand in the room. Those online, press Raise Your Hand button, or if you're calling in by phone, you can press star nine. Have any public comment or questions? I'm not seeing any comments or questions. Councilmembers, any comments or questions?
No questions, just comment on the Fire Department Pancake Breakfast Event. Highly encourage folks to go there. Thank you, City Manager, for reminding myself and the community. My chief of staff enjoys going there and dressing as a firefighter. I'm sure this year will be no different.
Now, allow.
I just wanted to point out, thank you for, you know, making sure everybody knows that the stroll's happening on Sunday. There is also a sidewalk event where the street does not get closed off, and that happens on Saturday. So, there will also be some music and vendors and local businesses open on Saturday. So, hope you can join us both days.
I'll put a plug for the Albany Triathlon. My wife has entered this year, and a series of her friends have entered as well. So, I have participated in the Albany 5K, but I do not swim. So, I am not entering the triathlon. Although, I hear you can enter as a team. So, you know, I would be up for doing the running leg if anyone wants to do the swimming part. But, so again, thank you, City Manager, for the update. We'll move on to item six, Good of the City. On Good of the City, this is for attendees to provide council comments, information, and questions on items that is not on the agenda. Please raise your hand now in the room or online if you have any comments to make today. Looks like we have two people, three people in the room for Good of the City. How many online? Four online?
Four in the room and one online.
Okay, we'll do three minutes each. By state law, known as the Brown Act, the Council cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda except under extraordinary circumstances. Rather, items raised may be referred to a future agenda or to staff Rather, items raised may be referred to a future agenda or to staff recomment.
Okay, I have Claudia, I'm sorry, Claudia Burgos, and then after that, Stephen Alpert and Tom Stimek.
Thank you, good evening, Councilmember Burg. My name is Debra Gable, I'm the Director of Leadership and Community Relations at AC Transit. I've been shooting tonight for Ryan Cloud, who most of you probably hear from on a regular basis either during this meeting or via email, but I'm really just here to remind you tonight about AC Transit's Realign project. Realign is a comprehensive assessment of every bus line in our source area in response to substantial shifts in ridership and commute hours since the pandemic. The AC Transit Board has officially opened the public comment process and has set public hearings which are scheduled for September 9th, 10th and 11th. The public comment period will end on September 11th after the close of that final meeting that evening, so we urge you and the public, anybody who's watching, to visit actransit.com/realign for more information, including ways in which you can submit your comments. We do encourage City Albany to submit your feedback to AC Transit as well as the community in regards to what is now the Realign draft final plan, so we're asking for that feedback as soon as possible. This is a process that's been in place for, I think, we're on our 18th month of Realign, so all public comments receive either in writing or a public hearing will be taken into account and need to be made part of the public record. And then once the public hearing concludes on September 11th, a draft final plan will be developed for a board decision in October. Assuming the board makes a decision in October, then staff will start looking for implementing a new network as early as March of 2025. So we encourage you all to get involved, get your feedback as soon as possible. And then lastly, AC Transit is looking forward to participating on Sunday at the Solano Stroll, both in Albany Bus and the booth at the festival. We'll have information about Realign there as well. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Stephen Alpert, well-known to the council. Over the past five months, I and several Albany residents have given the council address as an agenda item why the city follows only the minimum state mandate of notifying those within 300 feet of proposed new construction, while other municipalities have expanded notification to 1,000 feet. 300 feet notification is inappropriate for large multi-story projects which will affect all of Albany. Such was the case for the five-story mixed commercial residential structure proposed for 1600 Solano, which if built will drastically alter the small-scale tree-lined character of Solano Avenue. I understand the city is under pressure from the state to construct new housing, however that does not absolve the Planning and Zoning Commission nor the City Council from adhering to the Albany Design and Review Process or from ignoring legitimate concerns and objections expressed by your constituents. Notifying only those within 300 feet clearly limits public discourse, allowing the Planning and Zoning Commission and the council to push through new projects no matter how inappropriate with minimal public awareness and input. Indeed, minimizing public input appears to be the motive for the city endorses and follows the minimum state mandate. Only 73 properties were alerted about 1600 Solano. As documented at this forum, Community Development Director Bond and Councilman Jordan knowingly lied to avoid addressing 300 feet notification. The city put forward, and the city attorney put forward, a misleading pretext about increased expenses. An applicant would bear if wider alerts for new construction were adopted. Expanding notification to 1,000 feet would have increased mailing costs of 1600 Solano from $46 to $515. Hardly much of an impediment, Attorney Solano, Attorney Super Marion. P&amp;Z Commission members McLeod and Pilch, appointed by Councilman Jordan, and subsequently both councilmen approved the submitted plans for an oversized, uninspired, five-story modern box at 1600 Solano, totally discordant with the adjacent buildings, without at the minimum insisting that the new structure incorporate craftsmanship architectural features to be harmonious with the neighborhood. By approving the plans as submitted, the city violated every aspect of its posted mission statement on design review. The purpose of design reviews is to ensure that designs of the projects are visually and functionally appropriate to their site conditions and harmonious with their surroundings. Anyone with a sense of aesthetics will discern that the plans for 1600 Solano are neither visually and functionally appropriate to their site nor harmonious with their surroundings. Council needs to stop hiding behind the Brown Act and address 300 feet notification as an agenda item.
Thank you for your comments.
To address the council.
Hi, I think you've seen me before here. My name's Tom Stimek. I am a, just to remind you again, 40-year resident of Albany. I'm a state-licensed geotechnical engineer. I've had a consulting business in Albany for more than 20 years. And so I'm greatly pleased to be a citizen and a homeowner in Albany. During my work time, I've worked on many residential projects and several commercial projects in Albany. My perception is that Albany homeowners vary in their ability and desire to learn about new projects or new developments. Some of the citizens are quite old, let's be honest. We have some new young homeowners and then we have homeowners that are just too busy or for the moment, uninterested. However, a lot of that changes when a major project comes along and they become involved and concerned. And I'll, I was just remembering the Safeway project. That thing went on, citizens were involved and it was a very active time. And I'd like to just remind everybody, the 300-feet dimension that people talk about, that's one block, so the distance between Ordway and Ventura is 300 feet. So it's not a big, it's really not a very big area. I think Dr. Alpert has put forward a very rational and thoughtful recommendation for the city to notify residents on major projects. Establishing a simple distance criteria is direct, fairly inexpensive for major projects. Seems obvious to me that an independent committee could review such a criteria, which in my opinion is probably, well, it's certainly practical and probably legal. And to be honest, as a professional, it kind of escapes me why that step hasn't been taken. It's just not a, it's just not a major step and it's one for the citizens. And we all love the community and it's a, it's a step that would, would help, would help our citizens. They'll be involved, they won't be blindsided, and it's relatively simple. And again, that's both my professional and personal opinion, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi. I didn't have any prepared remarks. I just wanted to reiterate a public comment that I made via email yesterday, and I would like to thank you for your responses, particularly the City Manager who got back to me and I'm encouraged that this is in motion and thank you for your attention. I think this council's a model for the entire Bay Area and I really do appreciate the work you do and just wanted to thank you.
Lucinda? Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. I'm Lucinda Young, I'm a resident, homeowner, former Albany Unified School District parent. I was very concerned a few weeks ago. I was in a store in Albany and was quite surprised to see flavored tobacco for sale and these flavored tobacco products were in plain view. In May 2019, Albany banned the sale of any flavored tobacco products and that ban was followed in 2022 by State Proposition 31, which prohibited statewide the sale of flavored tobacco. And I remember that proposition was overwhelmingly approved by California voters. So I did report the violation to Albany Police Department and that was about three weeks ago and I did ask for a follow-up and I did not receive a follow-up, so I did make a second call about a week and a half ago and still have had no response. And I'm just concerned about what appears to be a lack of enforcement of our city and state ban on flavored tobacco. The reason that, for that ban was, so many people, especially young people, get hooked on tobacco by starting with flavored tobacco. And on that note, I was really impressed a few council meetings ago, I believe it was in June, when a group of Albany high schoolers spoke in favor of a tobacco sale ban for Albany's and I was interested to learn that at least two California cities have passed such a ban. And my, my recollection was that that was referred to a subcommittee and I am hoping that we'll hear more about this in the future. Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you for your comments.
So regarding Dr. Alpert's comments, on August 19th, I sent him the following. "To my knowledge, requiring notices to be sent to property owners greater than 300 feet from proposed multi-residence building or affordable residence could violate California Government Code Section 65008. This section prohibits discrimination based on the type of residences proposed." Or Albany would have to apply an expanded noticing distance to all proposed projects. This includes additions to houses, no matter how small. Even then, applying an expanded noticing distance for multi-residence and affordable residence projects would likely violate Government Code Section 65583(c)(3). It requires removing government constraints on the improvement and development of residences.
Not seeing any other council comments. There were no questions in regards to staff, so with that, we will close Good of the City. I thank everyone for coming to speak today on Good of the City and we'll move on to Item 7, Consent Calendar. On the Consent Calendar, items on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the Consent Calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the City Council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or a member of the audience requests removal of the items from the Consent Calendar. Do any council members wish to pull an item?
I just wanted to comment on the Cordernes's Creek Phase 4 item. Yeah, thanks.
Not seeing any other items from council. I believe there was a member of the public who also wanted to speak on Item 76, Cordernes's Creek. Are there any other items that someone would like to pull? Not seeing any in the room, any online? Not seeing any online? Please go ahead, comment.
I don't want to hold your proceedings. I'm Susan Schwartz, the head of Friends of Five Creeks and All Volunteer Creek and Watershed Restoration Group founded in Albany. I've been the head of it for way too long and I've been thinking about how long it can take to get environmental things done. It's not a complaint, but it's been more than 20 years since Friends of Five Creeks first hacked out a rough trail between 10th and 9th Street, creating the first place where anyone could walk from one street to another along Cordernes's Creek. But that wasn't the start. We were working on the dream of the now-defunct Urban Creeks Council, who in 1995 persuaded Albany, Berkeley, El Cerrito and UC Berkeley to sign on to the Joint Watershed Goal Statement, promising to bring creeks up into the sunshine with trails along them so that people could enjoy them. In 1998, Albany City's citizens passed the first bond measure to pay for just these kinds of improvements, along with money for ball fields and buying land on Albany Hill, but by the time this project actually happened, another much larger grant was needed. Now it's there and I hope you will all walk or cycle from San Pablo almost to the railroad tracks between, excuse me, 10th and 8th. The new plantings are beautiful. You can enjoy the schematic creep map done by a volunteer high schooler on the fence opposite Belmont Village where his grandmother lives, that she can look at and see it every morning. And our interns' new laminated signs on the fence protecting the 9th Street Meadow, which I hope will induce some kids to do, find interesting things in nature. Nothing is ever finished. There is still no long-term maintenance agreement and you may see the bags and cardboard in 10th Street resulting from a sale made about, who's going to do that? We have not solved the problem of homelessness, although there are some interesting glimmers. But for now, I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to take the opportunity of the same to thank planning staff and public work staff for leaving this project on the behalf of the agencies and it's far more than just a path project. As the President just relayed, there are a number of other features and so I'm just grateful for the work. Thank you.
I too want to say thank you so much, particularly Susan, for the leadership you have shown in the persistence and fortitude to make sure that these things happen. I have watched the creek over the years. I moved here with my family in 2005 and over the years I've watched as that creek has been restored and is slowly a segment and segment has been revealed to the public. I am a big fan of looking for fish in creeks, often looking for trout. I've not seen a trout in the creek yet, but I hear a couple of years ago, we did have a salmon come visit the creek, so maybe I'll keep an eye out for the salmon during salmon season. Any other comments by council? With that, I'll entertain motions on the Consent Calendar.
Move Consent?
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move on to Item 9, 91, Sustainable Foodware Ordinance, first reading.
Hello, councilmembers. Nice to see you this evening. I'm Michelle Plous, Community Development Analyst, and I'm joined tonight by our Civic Spark Fellow Sutton Payne, who has been doing excellent work for us all year long and in particular has been taking the lead on the development of this Sustainable Foodware Ordinance. So I'm just going to give a little bit of introduction and then hand it off to him to talk to you about all the details. So I'm just going to give a little bit of introduction and then hand it off to him to talk to you about all the details. Next slide, Sutton. So I'll start with a little bit of, sorry, start with a little bit of background about why we're bringing this to you. We've been working on this ordinance for nearly a year now. And this has actually been something that's been in the works for several years. We've known for a long time that waste is a major issue when it comes to sustainability in our community. Last year in Albany, there was actually 1,600 tons of landfill waste generated just in the commercial sector alone. And we know that plastic is a really big portion of that. In California, it made up about 14% of the waste stream. So we know that plastic, and in particular, plastic foodware, is a major component of waste generation in Albany. And because of that, in 2019, one of our Climate Action and Adaptation Plan goals was to develop a Sustainable Foodware Ordinance with partnership from Stop Waste, which is exactly what we've done here. And we also think that this is a really great moment to be working on this ordinance. We were really poised for success here. Sorry, Sutton, could you go back for a sec? You know, the last ordinance related to foodware was passed in 2008, so it's high time for an update. There's been a lot of changes since then. There have been a lot of state laws passed recently that are regulating restaurants in different ways and changing the way that the plastic and foodware industry is regulated. And so we think this is a good time for the city to actually be helping support businesses making that transition, sort of staying ahead of the curve. And then we also have a lot of regional community support, in particular from Stop Waste. They developed a model ordinance last year with a lot of resources and research. That's what this ordinance is based off of mainly. We actually have a colleague from Stop Waste in the audience tonight here to support us, too. And there's also lots of jurisdictions nearby that have passed similar ordinances that we've learned from and partnered with, as well as the community support in general, and in particular, a recommendation from the Climate Action Committee to adopt this ordinance as well. So with that, I'll talk about just the highlights of the ordinance. Of course, we had the text of the ordinance attached to the packet as well. But the first big piece of it is a requirement for takeout foodware, that that either be reusable or made of compliant disposable foodware. And our definition of compliant is essentially that it either be made of 100% fiber-based material or aluminum or glass, and not be made of plastic, have a plastic lining, or use compostable plastic, which here in Albany is not actually being composted in our commercial waste stream. It is technically compostable, but it takes very specialized conditions that aren't just, that just aren't realistic in most commercial or organics facilities in California. So that's the reasoning behind that. We know that that kind of fiber-based material doesn't work for every single application, and so we will be creating an updated exemption list of certain products or use cases that don't work with the products currently on the market. So we won't be requiring anything that isn't feasible for a restaurant to use. Second, we have dine-in foodware. We're going to be requiring through this proposed ordinance that all containers and utensils for dine-in be reusable and that other foodware accessories can be disposable again, as long as they're that compliant fiber-based material. And then a few other pieces of this. All foodware accessories must be given to customers upon request or at self-serve stations, rather than just putting everything in the bag whether they want it or not. And then also, there will be a 25-cent charge for disposable cups, and that'll be an itemized charge on the receipt, and the income will be retained by the food vendor. And then lastly, we're planning a 12-month transition period. So one year after the effective date of the ordinance, we'll actually start doing enforcement. But all of that 12 months in between is for, you know, outreach and technical assistance, making sure that restaurants have plenty of time to get into compliance and make all the changes needed before we do any kind of enforcement. So it's really about resource forward and making sure they have the opportunity to do this and no one's being blindsided. We also made a couple little changes that we'll be recommending tonight regarding events. I'll talk a little bit more about details on that later on, but just wanted to clarify some of the pieces of that based on comments that came up today. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Sutton, who's going to talk through some of the details and analysis of the impacts.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. Hello, council. I'm really excited to talk about this project that I've been working on for basically the past year now, when I started my fellowship back in last October. What we wanted to start with here is just a rough timeline, basically of all the work that's gone into researching this, starting with understanding what's actually getting composted, the difference between these compostable plastics or bioplastics and then fiber-based materials, including jurisdiction, collaboration, working groups, business outreach, and then the three times that we have brought this ordinance and our research to the Climate Action Committee. This also lays out kind of the timeline for us foreseeing the ordinance hopefully getting adopted and then the enforcement beginning 12 months thereafter, as Michelle mentioned. One of the things that I like about this timeline is that it highlights kind of the implementation considerations that we were thinking about when drafting it, including feasibility of product, product availability, equity, or business impact, both fiscal and just within their logistical operations, and then also environmental impact. Is this actually moving the needle in terms of reducing emissions and increasing our waste diversion efforts? So that is kind of the rough idea. We held both a foodware survey and then conducted two pilot programs with Kim's Cafe and Sandwiches and Taita Cafe. From the foodware survey, our main gatherings was that there was this major overuse of plastic amongst the restaurants in Albany. Of all of them, plastic was the most used takeout foodware material. That was followed by a tie between fiber-based compostables and the PLA materials. There was also a large confusion over compostability and green options. What they were purchasing, was it actually getting composted? What were they doing with it? Were customers understanding what bins to put it in? The last thing that we gathered was their concerns over product cost. Product cost overwhelmingly was the biggest concern and hurdle in making a sustainable foodware transition. It was 81% of restaurants named that their first concern. So that's something that we've really been considering in our research. And then in looking at the pilot program, we wanted to kind of test two of the main facets of this ordinance being the reusable dine-in and then the sustainable fiberware takeout. So with Kim's Cafe and Sandwiches, we provided them with sustainable fiberware and saw immediate customer approval and satisfaction. Customers liked that. What they're receiving, they knew was sustainable, and it worked for a lot of the options that Kim's was serving. We saw some cost-effective and cost-feasible takeaways as well. Working with Taita Cafe and Rethink Disposable, there are savings that I'll talk about later when switching from disposables to reusables, and then comparable fiberware costs as well, which is something that was new to our findings. Staff also wants to acknowledge that there's limitations in this. In working with Kim's Cafe, a couple of the materials or specific takeout products didn't specifically work. Sometimes the sizing, sometimes there's going to be either hot food items or liquids that don't work, and that's something we acknowledge. And we want to have a city-backed and updated exemption list, which a couple other jurisdictions have done. Just, that's something I wanted to mention. Moving on here, this really assesses what I mentioned before in terms of landfill reduction and increasing our efficiency in terms of waste diversion. This is from our KPI presentation that we gave to the Climate Action Committee. We actually had an improvement in landfill as a city. However, our composting numbers also went down. It's also worth noting that the waste mix percentages showed no improvement over the past several years. So while there was a slight reduction, we're really not making that big of an impact. And we think that plastic packaging and single-use packaging from foodware is a massive way that we can do that. There's been several studies by the EPA, as well as CowRecycle, that did waste characterization studies. And rigid plastic, as well as the film plastic that makes up foodware, was making up a large percentage of these things that they're finding in the waste. So that's kind of where we're targeting with this ordinance. The emissions impact, reusable foodware just has these clear benefits of less carbon emissions through the life cycle of that product. You're not buying as much plastic. The plastic isn't contributing to emissions. It's hundreds and hundreds of use per item, which is great, obviously. And then the landfill reduction, which is the end goal as well. We also had several co-benefits. You're going to have reduced landfill and hauling prices for businesses, which is great. There is a ton amount of plastic that go into the bay from foodware as well. And then the last thing, which is also a statewide measure, is limiting PFAS, or those like forever chemicals that are in a lot of foodware products. So that's another thing that we want to target with this ordinance and something we've been thinking about. Moving on to the cost analysis, with reusables, it's honestly been a no-brainer. It's a great opportunity for businesses to both have a sustainable environmental impact and also save money. Rethink Disposable has several case studies, which show this low upfront costs and very quick return on investments. Can range from $3,000 to $22,000 in annual savings. And then the initial investment can range from $2,000 to as low as $80 to transition. In our pilot program, when we worked with Taita Cafe, it was in the low hundreds to get them to be fully reusable. And in looking at the responses of our foodware survey, a lot of the restaurants in Albany were already 70% to 80% at all reusable. So it wouldn't take a lot to push them over to that 100% reusable, which I think is very important to note. Minimal changes as well in dishwashing operations and staff training. A lot of these measures have already been thought of by organizations like Stop Waste and Rethink, which I think is really crucial to understand. In assessing fiberware, we were actually pretty encouraged with some of the data that we were finding. In comparing it with compostable plastics, it's actually a lot more affordable, 20% to 30% more affordable. It takes a lot more energy and emissions to produce these bioplastics. And if they're not actually getting composted, then there's really no use for them in Albany. And then we found that there are comparable costs with traditional plastics, as well as an expanding market of products to choose from. Again, if there isn't something that works specifically, or if there isn't a product that's going to work for a business, we're happy to work with them and provide that technical assistance. There's also various sustainable discounts and funding available to purchase some sustainable fiberware, which we can talk about later. The disposable cup charge research is something that was also a piece of this policy we wanted to look into in actually swaying behavior of residents. One thing that we wanted to look at is looking at incentive versus a charge. And looking at several studies, as well as what other jurisdictions have done, having a minimal charge as opposed to a larger investment actually moves the needle in terms of waste diversion from our research. So that was an important takeaway. The 25-cent charge, we've kind of considered different areas. We considered a 50-cent charge. We considered no charge at all. The consistency among jurisdictions was something that's very important in terms of efficient waste diversion. So that's something that we gathered as well. There was also a high level of business support when the fee was collected by that restaurant. They simply have to itemize the 25-cent charge, like Michelle was mentioning, and then they can kind of have the freedom to do it however they like, if they want to list it on their menu and change the prices, or leave it the same and just add the price. So having that support from the businesses, as well as this regional standard, I think, is really important with the disposable cup charge. We're now going to move into some of the support mechanisms that we want to put in place that are going to be more stressed out through this 12-month period. The main one that we're excited to launch is the Albany Sustainable Foodware Program. We hope to have a separate website or a subsection on the sustainability website, which is based off other jurisdictions, similar efforts in helping with compliance. It's going to be very resource-forward, simplify a lot of these like key definitions, provide the product exemption list, which will hopefully be updated monthly, a city updated purchasing guide. There's a very extensive one that the County of San Mateo done, which is excellent. And it really, it helps businesses and restaurants sift through a lot of this confusing language and actually be compliant as well. Implementation guide, including employee training sheets, flyers, pamphlets, outreach materials. And then we also want to facilitate connections with Rethink Disposable and other organizations that are going to help this reusable transition. So I think that was all of the pieces of the puzzle that we want to support with. Lastly, in discussing our collaboration efforts, I've already mentioned Stop Waste and Rethink, but they have just been so helpful in this whole process. The ordinance template, as Michelle mentioned, was kind of our fabric, our foundation of what we used. There's also funding in available right now. We're in this unique position where there's an opportunity to take advantage of it and actually save money and have a real impact. And Albany can be the leader in this. Reusable-to-go programs is another example of this. Stop Waste has several grants with three different companies providing up to $1,000 in free services or six months in free services if they just want to join and try it out. So I think this kind of highlights the different opportunities that are out there and the different things that Albany can do to become more sustainable. Pass it back to you, Michelle. Thank you.
Yeah, so with all of that, our staff recommendation for tonight is to introduce and waive the first reading of Ordinance 2024-05, establishing a Sustainable Foodware Ordinance. This was also recommended by the Climate Action Committee, as I mentioned. As I said earlier, we do have a few edits that we've added tonight. We had some questions about the language about events, events in large venues being exempt. And so we have a recommendation for some slight changes, basically clarifying our intent with this was to make events exempt from the whole ordinance, basically because the logistics of requiring them to follow all these requirements would be very, very difficult for people that are coming in for one day. And so we do have a clause in the ordinance that says that the city manager will create regulations for city facilities and city permitted events. And so we're planning to kind of look at it as sort of a separate issue there later on. We can show you the text exactly of the changes we're recommending later on, but that's the crux of the changes. So that's our recommendation, and with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Looking for councilmembers for questions?
First of all, thank you so much for all the work on this. This is really great. And thank you for Stop Waste being part of this as well. The one question I do have is, have you hit any language barriers? And are we doing anything with, as far as the training and literature that will address people, you know, with different backgrounds, different language?
That's a great question. We haven't really gotten there yet, to be honest. We do hope, when we're doing, you know, website and flyers and all that kind of informational materials, to provide that in multiple languages, but we haven't really started developing those things as of yet. But that's definitely something I'll note down.
And I think we, Stop Waste has some of this stuff in different languages as well. I know that that was a piece that you, we've worked on there, too. So maybe some of that can be collaborated.
Yeah, absolutely. We love stealing from Stop Waste whenever we can.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Jordan?
Thank you. Yes, thanks. My thanks as well for work on the project, especially you and your year. You could be many places. You're here. Much appreciated. It seems that there might also be some savings in terms of reducing waste container size, since that scales. I don't know if that was brought up or part of the conversation with restaurants that do have dine-in and use disposable, but I would encourage entering that in the conversation, since we did have a substantial price rise in the cost of waste service. That could also help to pay for reusable. And like a right to, reducing waste, save money. We have a sugar sweetened beverage tax that does not have a CPI change adjuster in it. And so I'm, well, this is an ordinance, and so it's under council control. Unlike that, I would be interested in having a CPI adjuster of some type in there for the 25 cent per cup, because, you know, it is what it is now, but five years from now, you know, it'll be a diminishing real dollar consequence. And, you know, whether you want to say, basically it can be raised a nickel at a point at which the CPI has gone up 20%, however you want to do it. I'm thinking about that. I don't have a particular preference, but I will relay that using strange numbers gets people's attention. So one of the open pit lines that I visited in my work as a geologist, as you drove in to the facility, the speed limits were like 19 miles per hour, 17 miles per hour, 13 miles per hour. And, you know, it makes you pay attention. So, you know, there's a balance there, but I wouldn't necessarily just automatically assume that saying, hey, we're going to raise it to 26 cents, when, you know, it goes up 3% or whatever, is a bad idea. Obviously, do people want to like re-enter and re-code? Obviously, do people want to like re-enter and re-code every year? So I'll leave that to staff, but those are some thoughts on that.
Yeah, it's not something I had thought of in particular, but I think it's definitely doable. I'm sure there's, yeah, multiple ways to do that. As far as I know, there are no ordinances with a CPI adjuster for the cup charge, but I'm sure we could be the first.
Yeah, I don't think there's any at the moment, but there are some that have trial periods, similar to our enforcement period, where they have 25 cent charge for the first 18 months, and then it can be adjusted or automatically raised to 50 cents. So that's something we could look into as well.
Yeah, and again, I guess, since Stop Waste is in the room, and thank you. If it's not been done anywhere else, which one understand that it might not have been, that does seem reasonable, another opportunity for all, all the whole brain trust, Albany Brain Trust, Stop Waste Brain Trust to get together and decide, is this crazy idea or is this reasonable? Is it worth the hassle?
Looking for any other questions? I had a question about the reusable program. So there are programs where companies provide reusable containers. Is that correct?
Yes, there's, there's kind of several different systems in place. Sometimes they'll provide the actual containers. Sometimes they'll just provide the application or app to get it done themselves.
My understanding is that at the state level, there was also a law that was passed that allows, allows you to bring your own reusable container to restaurants that accept reusable containers to provide food in, whereas I believe that was not allowed under the health code before. Is that something that can be, and could that be something that's incorporated into the program as well? So advertising that there are establishments that have chosen to accept reusable containers that you bring yourself as opposed to participating in a program?
Yeah, definitely. That's, that's something that we actually highlight within the specific ordinance. Yeah, the state measure 1276, and then also 619 touches upon the customer provider usables as well as their, as long as they're like cleaned out and properly sanitary. But that's something we want to include in here so that it reminds restaurants that that's, that that's doable and that they, they need to accept that. Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item? Anyone in the room? Do we have anyone online?
Hello, my name is Ben Schleifer, and I am the Endocrine Disrupting Chemical Purchasing Coordinator at the Center for Environmental Health. I'm also here representing reusable Alameda County, which is a coalition of folks who got together to try to help folks move more to reuse. I'm here to voice my support for the Albany reusable foodware ordinance. While many of you have heard the environmental impacts for single-use foodware, I'm here to bring light the health impacts. I'm a bit of a downer at parties, just to give you all a heads up. So this item sheds microplastics, and it's intended to go in the mouth. This is not surprising to see micro and nanoplastics throughout the human body. Recent studies have shown that microplastics are bioaccumulating in all the human organs, including the testes, placenta, and the human brain at alarming levels. This has been linked to Alzheimer's amongst other negative health impacts, but it also includes decreased fertility. But we're just on the cusp of understanding the impacts of microplastic infiltrating our bodies, and it's not just plastic. These molded fiber products are alarming as CH has found that per- and polyfluorinated alkaline substances, PFAS, the forever chemicals, are also in these products. And these can leach into your food as you eat off of them. Moreover, California has passed a PFAS ban in foodware in 2021, AB 1200, but we're still seeing these products testing very high for PFAS even now in 2024. And this is a clear violation of the law. And to be clear, this is not a plastic problem. This is a single-use problem. So we want to be phasing these out. So I implore you to follow the lead of the Albany youth, who have led actions to transition Albany Unified to some reusable products. Marin is going to be launching on September 10th. Ocean View is launching on September 16th. Cornell is being a little bit more coy, but I hope to get them this month as well. They also installed a large-capacity dish machine at Albany High to wash all of these dishes. It is going to be sitting dormant during non-school hours, and so that will increase the washing capacity of the entire city of Albany potentially. Folks from outside could pay to wash in Albany Unified's dish machine, which would be really cool. We're hoping to get all of Albany Unified onto reusable trays, utensils, and cups in the next three to five years. The youth understand the importance of getting these man-made chemicals out of the environment as well as their bodies, and it's important for adults with the decision-making power at the local level to follow the youth lead. The youth did not make this problem, and they should not be the ones to have to fix it. Please pass the reusable foodware ordinance as quickly as possible for Albany and follow what the cities of Berkeley and Oakley have done. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Greetings. Good evening. I'm Justin Lera with Stop Waste. Thank you for all the kind words about Stop Waste. I accept them on behalf of the organization, I guess. I'm the operations manager at Stop Waste. I have been working in our programs for most of my career there, 20 years though, and focusing on helping businesses prevent waste at the source. In more recent years, that has really revolved around packaging, both industrial packaging that businesses use to ship goods, and also more recently, consumer packaging, which includes foodware. I really just want to express support for the great work of staff here. Appreciate that they started with the Stop Waste model. That kind of puts us all on common ground, as other cities around the county are looking at the model, developing their own ordinances. And we want to, we do want to try to keep things as consistent as possible to make it easier for the businesses and the residents. So the model and this ordinance puts reuse first, which is really exciting. It's not an ordinance that says, use this disposable foodware. It does say that, but that's really not the first premise. The first premise is to make reuse accessible and convenient and costs comparable. And that's what we're doing countywide at Stop Waste. We're trying to build up the infrastructure for reuse in schools, in businesses, in all kinds of different institutions, for dine-in and for takeout. So you heard a lot of examples from Sutton about that. We plan to continue to support this work through grants, through technical assistance contracts with Rethink Disposable to go out door-to-door and visit restaurants and give them support. As council member Hanson Romero mentioned, also with outreach materials in multiple languages. So we have, I think, three languages currently and the capacity to translate to more, so we can work together on that as well. I think that's it. Thank you all for your support, and thank you to staff.
Thank you for your comments.
Got a whole lot now. My name is Sherry Goll. As the Zero Waste Coordinator for Race to Zero Waste, a Bay Area nonprofit, I've educated the public about what belongs in recycling and compost, and even manually sorted the waste myself. As such, I know firsthand how many people find it difficult to recycle and compost properly, which was also highlighted in the presentation. For many, it's an additional mental burden in an already busy life. When it comes to separating materials, questions inevitably come up. If something is made of bioplastic, does it go in recycling or compost? Single use puts the burden of this decision on customers, and many get it wrong because there are too many kinds of plastics, or they're not from the area, or they're rushing to a meeting, or anything else that can come up in life. We can make it simpler by switching to reuse and only providing prepared food accessories like straws and single-use utensils upon request. We envision a zero-waste world where dine-in reusables create a homey, welcoming experience, where reducing single-use plates, utensils, and cups foster clean parks for children to play in, where fence-line communities living near plastic production facilities thrive and have lower rates of asthma. All of that is possible with zero waste, and it starts with this ordinance.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, good evening. Can you, it looks like it's my turn. So my name is Stephanie Rennie. I'm an Albany resident and former owner of Feelgood as your way store located on Solano Avenue. So first, I'd like to thank city staff who worked thoroughly on this ordinance. They collaborated with local restaurants and studied the issue of single-use packaging in great details. I urge you to pass this ordinance tonight. It's aligned with the Climate Action Plan. It supports local businesses by reducing their expenses. It reduces litter on our streets and in our environment. It creates, it creates a healthier city for all, and it helps fight climate change. Please include events in the ordinance, because the amount of waste generated by large events is staggering, and they shouldn't be exempted from reducing waste. It's crucial to pass this ordinance and send a message to Albany residents that single-use plastic are a threat to our environment and our health, as it was presented by Stop Waste, and therefore should be banned as much as possible. Finally, I'm really glad to see reusables as an option for takeout food, and I hope we'll see pilots soon in our restaurants in Albany, as reusables are the most sustainable solution.
Evening, this is Lucinda Young, Albany resident and also a member of the Albany Climate Action Coalition. So can you hear me?
We can hear you, Lucinda.
The timer is not moving. It's still stuck on three, so I wasn't sure. At first, I really want to thank, do a big shout out to Michelle and to Sutton and the Climate Action Committee members for doing such a terrific job on this. I attended at least two previous Climate Action Committee meetings, which were almost exclusively donated to working on this ordinance. So big thank you. And I also want to thank all the previous speakers who pointed out the health consequences, along with the environmental consequences from single-use disposables. I wanted to, as a member of the Climate Action Coalition, I want to emphasize that single-use disposable foodware exacerbates climate change, and disposable foodware has a much greater climate impact than reusables, and that single-use plastics, and as Sutton pointed out, most of the disposable foodware in Albany is single-use plastics. A single-use plastic supports the continued fossil fuel production, which is leading us to irreversible catastrophic climate change. In addition, I do want to point out that I do shoreline cleanup at Albany Bowlb and nearby Point Isabel. And the primary litter, unfortunately, I pick up besides plastic bags, is plastic foodware. And we've got a big problem. And certainly, not all of that foodware comes from Albany, but some of it does, and we all have a responsibility to do our part. We've got a lot of cities, California cities and counties, as well as jurisdictions all over the world, that have passed similar ordinances, and we need to do our part here and do the same. I do want to make one suggestion for improvement. Michelle had said at the beginning that the ordinance is going to be revised from the draft to make large venues as an exception for the entire ordinance, as it's written large venues was only for the presentation of customers' own cups and containers. I would, I question whether it makes sense to have a across-the-board exclusion for all large events. First of all, large events isn't even defined in the statute. We're going to have some problems there. And also, there is an exclusion already, a hardship exclusion. And I don't know that we need a large venue exclusion in addition to hardship exclusion. But despite that problem, I wholeheartedly support this ordinance. I think it's the best choice to address the health and environmental problems with disposable foodware and support our climate goals, and it's good for business. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Council. Nick Pillage here, and I had the privilege of being on the board of Stop Waste for a year, and we had discussions on the reusable foodware ordinance template, if you will. And I really appreciate the work Stop Waste has done on this, and appreciate the work that the Albany staff has done on this. And just briefly, I fully support this idea. We cannot tackle this problem of single-use disposable items fast enough. We're drowning in a single-use disposable waste. So I urge you to pass this tonight, to pass the first reading, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, this is David Wimmer. I'm a member of the Albany Climate Action Coalition. And I'll make this kind of short, short, because I think all the previous speakers have spoken eloquently about why we should pass this measure. Wholeheartedly support it. I just want to thank staff for just really a tremendous job in really getting down into the weeds to, you know, get into the details that are so important on something like this so that we really get what we're, what we're looking for and what we need. So just thank you so much, and let's please make this a unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, this is Nick Peterson. I'm a 30-year resident of Albany and also a member of the Albany Climate Action Coalition. I first want to thank staff for their hard work on this, and also the Climate Action Committee members. This has been a long time coming, and I know there've been a lot of, there's been a lot of energy expended in this, and really good energy, you know, reaching out to businesses in Albany, performing pilot projects that bring them in and get the feedback. And then also, it's my understanding that the ordinance does include measures that will make it easier and help businesses make the transition to this. You know, I was in Europe recently in Lisbon and at a train station, and the little kiosk there that served coffee, everything came in reusable. There was nothing that was thrown away except for the napkins, and it could be composted. So other, other places are doing this, and it's feasible. The whole world used to run like this before. It's not necessary to do indoor dining or takeout dining with these quickly disposable items. It's an extra convenience that is killing the planet, and the convenience is just sloth, in my opinion. If we put our minds to it, and I think the staff and the Climate Action Committee have done this, they built this on information from Stop Waste and from other entities that have implemented their own ordinances, and it's proven to work. Albany likes to say it's a leader in sustainability and climate action, and I think we should be, and we should do this to continue our leadership. I've heard some people say it does not matter what Albany does, we're so small. Who cares? That's a very defeatist attitude to take. It cares a lot, because Albany as a community has really shown its interest in prioritizing climate change and climate action very highly in what we do as a city and what we do as a municipality. So I really encourage the council members to pass this unanimously. I'm sure we'll get a little blowback from some people, but again, there are approaches that involve education and information and assistance that will help. And we can all be proud, and people will want to come to Albany because we have these kind of ordinances in place and are working together to end the scourge of just this disposable lifestyle. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. I'll bring it back to council for any discussion.
I just want to, again, reiterate how grateful I am, the way that this has come together, the really working with the community at large and, you know, walking them through it, finding solutions to their challenges. Those are the key pieces that can make things like this go much more smoothly, and this is really, like, exactly how we, we can really enforce change and, and make it easy for all of us to change, and all of us to do better, is, is by making these little steps and getting more people on board and, and getting the understanding and the education behind it. So, again, great job for all of that. It's kind of ironic to me, sitting here thinking about, I remember being in Cornell Elementary School with my food tray that I would go through and get my, you know, stuff slopped on there, but, I mean, it was, you know, it, it's like, how did we, how did we leave that in the first place, you know? It's just the irony, just like baffling to me, so. So yeah, again, I just want to thank everybody for, for doing what they're doing, and I think, great job.
Yeah, I was wondering if you could show that the language changes?
Sutton, do you want to walk through it?
Yeah, so the, the point about large, or events, was definitely something that we wanted to touch upon. Sorry.
Under food vendor, yeah, there we go.
There we go. Yeah, we have multiple different things open here. Yeah, so it was initially based off of the Stop Waste model. We did a different classification here, where we included the exemption of a event that is in the city within our food vendor definition, meaning that events don't classify as food vendors, meaning that the entire ordinance does not apply to them. We removed them, however, from the exemption where they were placed under customer-provided reusables, because we thought it was very feasible for even like temporary food trucks or any events that are having operations in Albany to take customer-provided reusables. And then the other thing I want to mention is that we are going to place them under this category of city purchasing facilities and city-sponsored events, so they're not free of regulation, per se. This just gives us a little more flexibility in working specifically with their operations and, and seeing what works for them, yeah.
And I'll clarify that the requirement to accept customer-provided reusables is state law. It's also placed in here, just sort of to reaffirm that, but it would apply to events based on state law, so that's sort of covered separately. And then, yeah, as Sutton said, we kind of, we see them as fairly distinct in terms of the challenges that they have, so we really thought it would make more sense to approach that within this section here, rather than having them have to follow all of the requirements of permanent restaurants within the city.
I just want to add to that a little bit, because I think there was also some outreach and work that Stop Waste was doing with the health departments as well, and a lot of these, you know, vendors that come in, food trucks, or, you know, day-of type operations, for example, with the Solano Stroll, they're all required to have, you know, health department permits, and, you know, that partnership with the health department along, and doing the education as well through that, through those channels will help to mainstream those as well, moving forward. So, it won't, you know, they're, they're being addressed, but in a different channel, so.
Yeah, absolutely, and that brings up another point that I wanted to mention, is that we definitely want to be resource-forward for events and trying to provide as, as many tools as we can to try to help event managers and food trucks and all those people use more reusables and more sustainable disposables. It just seems like at the moment it would be really hard to make those requirements, so, you know, hopefully that's something we can look at further down the line and see what is feasible for right now. Thank you.
I certainly don't expect you'll have the answer to this, this point, but it says established administrative procedures. Do you have, even some glimmer of a concept, if that procedure is going to be sort of prescriptive and evolving through time for, for large events and/or adaptive in the sense of it's going to mandate a certain, you know, set of meetings that occur with a large event? Entity to discuss and decide, okay, what is the city going to require of them?
Yeah, I'd say at the moment, we don't have a super clear idea of what that looks like. It is more flexible than an ordinance, and that was kind of part of the idea, is that there's more flexibility there. And there are some requirements that are already in place, you know, for instance, events are, event managers are required to deal with waste and, you know, make sure that waste is being managed accordingly, and, you know, so there, there are existing regulations, and basically, we want to kind of look at what exists and what makes sense, and think about that in a sort of more ongoing basis, and hopefully do some work on that sooner than later, but also kind of continue revisiting as we see how things work.
Yeah, that was one of, one of the comments, the council received and writing by email was with pictures of a large event where they were required to manage their waste, and yet, there's windblown waste all over the place, so I think that was part of the, the concern about the way the wording was originally structured.
Yeah, I think my comment, some piggyback off of what Councilmember Jordan was alluding to, that is a bit of a sticking point for me, that large event included. I'm curious if there's a way to dance with the language a bit, though. Maybe not necessarily from the jump, say that they're exempt, but perhaps safeguard rail language in there that dates something along the lines of contingent upon funding and resources, because I do understand and I do recognize to work with food vendors and food trucks, it does require more robust support at the county level. That's certainly not something that we at the local level can handle, but I think if we have potentially safeguard rail language like that, that allows us to make it enforceable, if possible, later down the road. Suggestion or perhaps a recommendation, I'm curious to see or hear what other council members say or have thoughts around that.
So, for example, the Solano Avenue Association employs or hires a company by the name of Green Mary, and she comes through and she, her and her team like sort and, you know, clear up everything along the, along the parade, or along the festival, near the end, everything's got to be sorted and put into the right waste streams and everything else like that. And then, the following day, you'll see the Blue Glove crew out there, first thing in the morning, handpicking anything that may have been left behind or has happened since Green Mary had done her due diligence, so.
Under this language, that is potentially, obviously not that specific company, and thank you for sharing that, but, but a service, utilization of a service like that could potentially be required. I mean, this language would allow for that administratively, as a part of the permit condition?
Yeah.
Presuming, okay.
Yes.
And just to be clear, when I referred to an event that didn't manage this waste, I want to be very clear, it was not the Solano Stroll. The Solano Stroll's amazing the next day, it's like, it never happened, it's pretty incredible, so, thank the Solano Avenue Association for that. In terms of guardrails, I don't have any creative ideas from the days, but a motion could be made. Should be the council's pleasure to pass this on first reading, waive first reading, with the direction to, for staff to think about and bring back language like that.
Aside from potential guardrail language that can make something enforceable, if possible, in the future, contingent upon resources and funding, of course, I also just want to acknowledge and express my gratitude and thanks for this ordinance coming before us, to be able to have the privilege to make a decision on this, no matter how big or how small of an influence our community may have, and I say that with a lot of intent and personal experiences, coming from a very low-income background, community in Richmond, and knowing that we didn't grow up with much advocacy, certainly not to the extent that we see the city council have for this community, and to know that I come from many, many folks and elders who had no choice or flexibility or any sense of liberation from forever chemicals, that they had essentially forced upon them. And without getting too personal, you know, the reality of my own father having to fight cancer and me questioning, is it linked to the exposures he had as a young person growing up in, in Oakland and San Leandro, and the cookware that is readily available to his family and to the low-income communities that don't have the flexibility to maybe purchase something that's not as toxic, or not toxic at all, and to be able to now make, have some sense of making a decision, again, no matter how big or how small a community is, and knowing that it can potentially impact my own children, my, my daughter and my son, and knowing that I'm, not just me, but all of us today have that opportunity to really change, make genera, not just change, but make generational shift on how young people grow up and take on climate issues and take on the climate crisis, because I know there's that cliche argument that what, what's one paper straw going to do to save the world, or why are we forced to do that when big companies continue to pollute? And I understand the argument, but, again, one of the clean, most cleanest cut ways to induce generational change is to do it in our own local community and work on educating, make it our young people more aware, so that they have the tools and resources to not just know what is best for their future, but what they can use to further catalyze change, because it doesn't stop here with a simple sustainable foodware ordinance. There's no telling what any of our children might be capable of doing. I wouldn't be surprised one day if I've come to council 40 years from now and I see my daughter and Jen's daughter over here, like, you know, our parents did this, you know, look what we're about to do, like, that's what I want to see, so. And I think when we have an opportunity like this with an ordinance, I don't want to dismiss it as just, you know, a simple thing that we're doing in our community, but it is powerful, it's impactful, and potentiality of saving many lives and allowing folks in our community to have much longer, healthier lives, so thank you.
I mainly just want to echo what all the other council members have said and give my thanks to staff and our fellow for working on this. This is a, I think, a good example of a policy that's, I mean, it's great policy, it's kind of an obvious one to do, but it's not necessarily an obvious one to figure out how to do it in a way that works for our city. And so, I think it's obvious that we, our staff has done the work to figure that out, done it very diligently, worked with the community and worked with the businesses to figure it out, and it showed that it is a home run in all respects, like, it works. So, I think that's, that's great. You know, I agree with some of the comments made of it would be ideal for this to apply to everyone, but, you know, it may not be possible right now, so I think this may be the kind of thing that we can have the goal of expanding when it, when and as is feasible. And, you know, if someone has a genius idea of the phrasing, I would normally do that, but I don't have it in me tonight, to, to figure out that language. I think we can probably figure it out at a later date, once we've had some time implementing this ordinance, so I'd be ready to move it when we're ready to entertain.
Thank you, council members. Thank you, staff. Again, I'll reiterate what, what the public said and what the council members had. Incredible work that you all have done as staff, both in terms of the research, the outreach, and then actually running a pilot program. And I think, to me, the most important thing is that this is one step, and every step that every city makes helps other cities continue to make those steps, so the lessons that you've learned hopefully will be passed on to other cities so that they can ideally apply this across, across Alameda County, across the Bay Area, and that leads to the next question, topic about the larger events, where we have food trucks come in or food vendors come in. My oldest son spent quite a few summers in high school working for some food vendors. They are, they are continuously running from community to community under different regulations, and so I appreciate the fact that staff has really thought about this and said that we'll work on administrative procedures to make sure that we can be flexible and allow these companies that are often small families running these businesses to be able to come to our city, and we want them to come to our city, but we also, knowing that over the long term, we need to figure out a way of being more sustainable. And I think my hope is that those who have called in tonight in support of this and us as council members can push pressure on, at the state level and at the county level, because if regulations like this were on a county level for food trucks, then a food truck business or food vendor is really knows that all events in Alameda County, they'd be prepared for, to do something like this, and so I appreciate staff's approach, but that does mean that next steps really fall on us and on the supporters of this ordinance to push at the county level and at the state level. The last thing I'll say is, I'm hoping when we see the budget that we hear a little bit about, about this event and other events, other initiatives that the staff has created, that we're managing to budget for education and marketing. So you've done quite a bit of work with the businesses, but in reality, businesses are just the first step, really getting it out there that people understand that you are allowed to bring reusable containers in and restaurants can, can use those, that there is this program is really incredible. I know one member of the public had mentioned to me that in another community, they actually worked with each of the stores and they put a little sticker up that just advertised that this was a business that supported that, and it was, you know, part of Albany, part of their community, and, you know, whether it says Albany or something to that effect, kind of a co-branding. My long-term hope is that when you go onto Yelp or you go onto Google and you look up restaurants, you would also be able to see that it is a place that accepts reusables or has a program in place where they're using reusable takeout container program. With that, I'll look to council for motion.
I'll move to introduce and waive first reading of ordinance number 2024-5 with the amendments suggested by staff.
I'll second.
I would add, if we could add the direction for staff to continue to look at language in terms of, as Vice Mayor Lopez requested?
Yes. That works. Can, I will consider it added to the motion.
Okay, so with that, we have a motion?
Second, yeah.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanser Ramara?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Recognize, and we're going to have to pay 25 cents for our cups from now on, yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Motion passes. Carries.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, again, thank you, staff. With that, we'll move on to item 9-2, amendments to Albany City, I'm sorry, Albany Municipal Code, Chapter 20, Section 20, 20.08, 20.016, and 20.40, to update density bonus regulations and related housing provisions.
I'm going to need a minute here.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Leslie Mendez, Planning and Building Manager with Community Development, and I will be presenting amendments to the city's density bonus ordinance this evening. However, before we jump in, I thought it would be helpful, a little bit useful, to provide a summary of density bonus and how it's implemented. Originally enacted in 1979, California's Density Bonus Law, which is codified in Government Code, Section 65915 and following, requires a city to allow a developer to increase density for a housing project above the maximum allowable under the jurisdiction zoning code or general plan in exchange for including a certain percentage of the units as affordable. In addition to an increase in density, the law requires that cities grant qualifying projects a larger package of incentives intended to help make the development of affordable housing economically feasible. And this includes incentives or concessions that reduce the affordable housing cost and waivers or reductions of development or design standards that would otherwise preclude the development of the affordable housing project, as well as parking reductions. However, that's not necessary for our city since you passed, you eliminated parking minimums back in fall. In order to qualify for a density bonus, a project must consist of five or more units and provide a certain percentage of affordable units or senior housing within the project. And this includes 10% units for rental or sale to lower-income households, 5% units for rental or sale to very-low-income households, 10% for sale to moderate-income households, 10% of units for rent at very-low income to transitional foster youth, disabled veterans, or homeless persons, 20% of total units for lower-income students in a student housing project, and a senior citizen housing development or senior mobile home park. And unless noted, the percentage of qualifying affordable unit excludes any density bonus When we talk about household income, limits are set by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development based on surveys of local area median income, or AMI. Acutely low income is 0 to 15% of AMI, extremely low is 15 to 30, very low is 30 to 50, low income is 50 to 80. It must be noted that sometimes low income encompasses everything from 0 to 80. And moderate income is 80 to 120% of the AMI. And for reference, the AMI for a family of four, excuse me, in Alameda County for the year 2023 was $147,900. There are four basic steps to implementing density bonus. They are to calculate the maximum allowable density or base density of the project site, to calculate the allowable density bonus, to determine the eligible concessions for the project, and to determine the waivers or reductions of development standards needed to accommodate the density bonus project. And I will go into each of these in a little more detail. First, we calculate the base density or the maximum allowable density for a site. Say we have a lot that's 5,112 square feet that's located in the Solano Commercial Zoning District, and I must say, this is very similar to 1600 Solano. The maximum density standard is 63 dwelling units per acre. So, the maximum density on this site is 7.3 units or eight units. Density bonus law requires that all calculations of units be rounded up to the next whole number. This project proponent decided to include 15% of the units as very-low income, so 15% of eight is 1.2 or two units, and just graphically represented as the pink windows. Next, we need to calculate the density bonus for which the project is eligible, eligible, excuse me. And the amount of the bonus is determined by several factors. One is the unit type, whether it's senior housing, family housing, student rooms, the affordable, affordability level of these units, as well as the percentage of the affordable units that are included in the project. State law also gives additional densities for other eligible project amenities, such as including a daycare facility within the site or land donation. Once you have this information, oops, you do refer to the tables found in subsection F of Density Bonus Law to look up the percent density bonus for which the project is eligible. These, these are charts that are kind of abridged from the table F. On the left, you have the very, percentage of very-low incomes in allowable density bonus, and on the right, percentage of low-income units included in a project, and the percent density bonus. So, for our example, the project included 15% very-low income units within the project, so that qualified for a 50% density bonus. So, the maximum density, as we determined, was eight units. The 50% density bonus is four units, and those are represented as those surrounded by blue. And so, that equals a total of 12 units. And you can see, I also redistributed the pink windows, which are the affordability windows, units, to ensure that the project is compliant with our local ordinance that requires that affordable units are distributed by size and type throughout the units, and so they're not both the little Harry Potter units under the stairs. So, density bonuses are also tied to a specified number of incentives or concessions, which are found in Government Code, Section D2. And they are defined as a reduction or modification in development or design standards, approval of mixed-use zoning in conjunction with the housing project, and any other regulatory incentive or concession that is proposed by the project sponsor. The one thing is that any concession is required to provide for affordable housing So, concession allocations are found in D2 of Density Bonus Law, in Section D2, and this summarized in this table here. And as for, for example, at providing 15% very-low income, the project is eligible for three concessions. Although project developers can request any concession that provide for affordable housing costs, some of the most common concessions frequently requested are those for parking reductions, again, not here any longer, usable open space reductions or eliminations, taller floor-to-ceiling heights, or to allow residential units on the ground floor in those districts where that's not permitted. Next, we determine what waivers or reductions are required to accommodate the density bonus project. And a density bonus project is eligible for a waiver of reduction of any development or design standard that would physically preclude the construction of the affordable density bonus project with the concessions that are, for which it is entitled. There are no limits on the number of waivers that a project can receive. And one way to think about it is if you are maxing out the density potential of a site, you are probably maxing out the massing of that site as well, based on the development standards. So, once you have those bonus units, essentially, something's got to give to accommodate those units. So, some of the most common waivers are height, FAR or floor-area ratio, setbacks, stepbacks, parking, and open space. So, finally, here on our right, we have our, our density bonus project with the requested concessions and the waivers. And all density bonus projects are required to have affordability restrictions. Project sponsors are required to enter into a regulatory agreement for affordable housing with the city to ensure that continued affordability of such units. Density bonus law requires that the affordable units remain affordable for 55 years. I mentioned that our inclusionary housing unit requires that our inclusionary units remain affordable in perpetuity. So, oftentimes, project sponsors will use the qualifying units as their inclusionary units, which they're allowed to do. And if they do that, then the density bonus units are our inclusionary units, so then they would need to be affordable in perpetuity. So, that is a very brief overview of implementation of density bonus law, and I thought maybe I can answer any questions you have about that before we get into the ordinance. Questions?
If you have a question.
I'll just say, having, having gone through certain events, I appreciate the introduction and the briefing, but I think I understood it because of, I had to understand it previously. Thanks.
I was just going to say, Leslie, I really appreciate the presentation. I think it's a great summary and overview, and I appreciate the visuals.
I have one quick question, too. Could one of the, one of those concessions be, there's an art grant for new art for buildings. Could that be something that could be waived for some of these, like?
You know, I'm, Mala, I hate to pass it on to you, but I do feel like there's something special about impact fees, but I'd like you to answer that.
In general, impact fees can't be waived unless the city wants to, but art is not considered an impact fee. Art is, the way it's typically adopted with cities, it's a development standard, so in theory, requested as a waiver.
Thank you. Great question. All right, I'm going to turn to the ordinance then, if there's no more questions on that. You can always ask them later, too. Okay. So, here is the Density Bonus and Housing Provisions Ordinance Update. As we discussed previously, density bonus was enacted in 1979, and it incentivizes developers to include affordable units within a housing development in exchange for an increase in density, incentives or concessions that reduce affordable housing costs, and waivers of development standards and design standards to accommodate that development Purpose of Section 20.40 of the zoning code or housing provisions is to advance the goals of the housing element of the Albany General Plan, specifically to provide a variety of housing to meet the needs of all economic segments of the community, and to expand housing opportunities for those with special needs, including the elderly, persons with disabilities, and those experiencing homelessness. The Housing Provision section includes the city's local ordinance for inclusionary housing, density bonus, housing for person with disabilities, and emergency shelters. A little background, the city last updated our density bonus ordinance in July of 2018. However, since that time, to further incentivize affordable housing development, the state legislator has amended state density bonus law on an annual basis. So, although expanded more detail in the staff, in the table in your staff report, this is a brief, this slide highlights specific updates over the years that have rendered our local ordinance out of date and in noncompliance with state law. So, the purposes of the amendments before you tonight are threefold. First, to bring the city's density bonus ordinance back into compliance with state law. Second, to streamline the density bonus approval process. And third, to reorganize overlapping provisions for inclusionary housing and density bonus for clarity and ease of understanding.
Leslie, while you're on this slide, the streamline of the density bonus approval process, is that also a state law requirement?
No. That is, well, it's not a law requirement, however, state law does require jurisdictions to give a good faith effort to put as little barriers and to encourage the development of affordable housing. So, not a requirement requirement, but in compliance with the intent of state law and the direction of the legislature, yes.
Thank you. So, that is, it is a statemented effort that we streamline our process to be in compliance.
Correct.
Thank you. Just wanted to get that on the...
Thank you. So, as mentioned, the state has amended density bonus law on an annual basis, and there is no evidence to suggest that this trend will just continue. In fact, there are currently still two bills still alive this session that would amend the density bonus law further. Therefore, hold on, to accommodate the ongoing legislation updates, the ordinance has been amended to refer to relevant sections of state code instead of rewriting the language as it is today, since it may be out of date by January 1st of each year. So, this prevents obsolescence by creating dynamic updates with annual revisions to state laws. The second set of amendments are the streamlining or the Housing Element Program amendments. And Housing Element Program 2I, that is an I, states that is to update the density bonus ordinance to eliminate the requirement that all bonuses, incentives, and concessions must be approved by a city council. It goes on to also say, increase public awareness and understanding of density bonuses, including requirements for concessions and waivers. And we will be updating our, our forms and handouts upon approval of this ordinance and be posting those for our website to make sure that information is more easily transparent and available to the public. Streamlining amendments also include removing the requirement of council for approval of affordable housing agreements. So, similarly, that, these are the only substantive, actually, changes to the ordinance that is presented to you tonight. I know there was a lot of redlining, if you did see that last amendment, or the last attachment. But these amendments align not just with our Housing Element Program, but also with the mandate by state law to treat density bonus projects similar to other development The ordinance simplification kind of comes in four different categories. One is updated terminology. Terms have been updated, classifying folks as persons with disabilities and those experiencing homelessness. The second are definitions. It is definitions that are only found in the section of housing provisions have been moved out of our zoning code definitions into Housing Provision section only. Definitions that, the words aren't anywhere else used in the zoning code have been eliminated. And definitions, a few of them were also updated to ensure consistency with changes to state law. Third set of simplification are related to administrative requirements to allow flexibility in application in response to a changing environment. Administrative requirements, such as the content of the affordable housing agreement, as well as submittal requirements for density bonus, have been taken out of the ordinance and left to the discretion of the Community Development Director and City Attorney for the Regulatory Agreement and to the Community Development Director for the submittal requirements. And then finally, distribution and development criteria of affordable units. We have updated this to eliminate subjective criteria and to allow flexibility in consolidating affordable units within a development when a partnership with an affordable housing developer exists and would facilitate the development of affordable housing. So, we see that quite often now, because it's easier sometimes to get funding for a separate building, so we thought that was worthwhile. So, just on May 22nd of this year, the planning... So, just on May 22nd of this year, the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote to adopt the resolution recommending council amend the zoning ordinance per staff recommendation. And as of this presentation, we have received no public comment on this, on this topic. So, staff recommends that the city council introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance, adopting amendments to the Planning and Zoning Code related to density bonus. And upon approval of second reading of the ordinance will be scheduled at the next available council meeting. So, that concludes my presentation, and I'm here for any questions.
Any council members for questions?
Just a quick question, is there, so, then this would take out any sort of type of any design review? So, if somebody wanted to build a big treehouse or something, I don't know, just like imagining something random, where, where do you have, are there certain parameters that safeguard us from?
Yes. So, yes, that's a great question. So, it is what this, what these ordinance amendments are doing per the Housing Element Program is to treat housing, density bonus projects are similar, similar to any development project. So, any development project typically would require a design review application, and that application would be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and approved and/or denied, and that could be appealed still to city council. So, there are housing application types that are ministerial now, that are, you know, proposed by, I mean, that are promoted by the state. One of them is SB 35. There are a few others that are similar to SB 35, but are allowed on sites that have office or, don't really apply too much to our jurisdiction, since our commercial districts allow residential as well. But these ministerial projects do not go through a design review process. However, they need to comply with all objective design and development standards. So, could a treehouse be proposed? It's possible if it meets all our development in, you know, objective development design standards. So, we couldn't say, well, that's ugly. But we could say, you know, you're exceeding the height limit, you don't qualify for these ministerial processes. So, the same safeguards in terms of design review would be available with these changes as they currently are.
Great, thank you so much.
Sorry, Leslie, it's not a question. I was just going to build on your comment, though, because the danger with the SB 35 projects and the other projects that are this ministerial project is that they have to follow objective development and design standards. However, they can also ask for a waiver or concession from any of those standards. And we have written a lot of these, and we have seen a lot of the proposals have come in various communities. I think the benefit of still doing the objective development and design standards is we, as a community, are at least telling the developer, this is what we would like, even if they have the option of choosing to ignore that. I do appreciate the clarification, though, that a density bonus program is not necessarily an SB 35 project, so.
Correct.
That's, that's, that's helpful. Thank you.
If I read it correctly, the change to approval by or authority to approve to the Community Development Director, I think there was like a 30-day deadline, if I recall, from application to, there was some 30-day deadline that was introduced in here. And if you can do a search on the ordinance, because then it said, well, if the development director finds that the information that is submitted is incomplete, then they can sort of stop the, pause the process, ask for that information, the applicant can provide the information, and it restarts the 30 days. And I was just a little worried that that could put the development director in a time jam, because let's say, you know, they get an application, they start reviewing it on day seven, which is, you know, probably pretty quick, and then they realize on day 14, there's something missing, and they go to, they stop the clock, they go to the applicant, the applicant comes back, and then they tweet again three days later, and then they realize three days after that, that there's something else missing, and, you know, eventually the clock is running down, and the application's, you know, it's possible that the applicant would finally deliver all the information that's needed on day 29, leaving the development director one day to process it.
So, I'm, I'm going to have to look this up, because I'm actually not clear what it is you are referring to.
Yeah, and I'm wondering if, if, you know, I read the clean copy, and so I'm wondering if it's something that was in there that wasn't changed, and I'm just encountering it for the first time. But I think it was a provision, at least that would be more utilized in taking the council out of the process of approving density bonus.
Correct. So, again, I'm not sure if that was something that was taken out, which might have been. So, any, so I'm going to maybe answer around it.
Sure.
This ordinance would not place the approval of density bonus projects to, you know, give that to the Community Development Director.
Okay.
What this is saying is that a density bonus project would be processed and approved in the same way as a project similarly who didn't employ density bonus. So, there are going to be projects that are subject to design review and that are, would be subject to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those would still go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, whether they have density bonus or not. For projects that are eligible for ministerial processes, such as an SB 35, whether, again, it's density bonus or not, they all tend to be density bonus, but they don't have to be. Those projects would be ministerial reviewed by, by staff, by, you know, ultimately approved by the Community Development Director. And there are timelines for that that are set by state law, so, again, I would be, if I didn't take them out of the ordinance, I definitely should, because, again, it's difficult to, as we've learned, modify state law in our local ordinance, because as soon as that changes, we're out of compliance again. So, if you have a way to quickly look that up before I quickly look it up, but.
Yeah, well, we'll.
So, there are timelines, both for any project, the Permanent Streamlining Act, which, which staff has to respond and do a completeness review, which, within 30 days of an application being submitted. Similarly, for ministerial projects, there's certain timelines as well, and I haven't done one for a while, but 30 days seem about the right time that we are often allowed to have to respond by.
Yeah, so I'll try to bring it up and.
I just looked it up. It's in Section 204060, housing for persons with disabilities. And in paragraphs, it starts with, I think, paragraph six there, where it talks about the Community Development Director making a written determination after receipt of application. I think that's for accommodations to that section.
Thank you. Okay. So, the ordinance did not actually touch the disability section or the emergency shelter section. So, if that was there, and if that was of a concern, it may be a concern, but this was focused on density bonus. Thank you for looking that up quickly. I should have had it open. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Not seeing, let me see, wait, are these questions? Oh, this is a question. So, it was brought up that our art fee is a development fee? And so, the question would be, do we have the ability to change that to an impact fee? Okay. Perfect. Just checking. I also know that a lot of the state law changed that you, you can't just suddenly decide across the city to lower the density everywhere. So, I mean, you can, but then you have to find another site where you increase the density. So, I didn't know if development fees, impact fees was another one of those categories. It was just, we can't change that to an impact fee. Okay. Everything else I wrote down is a comment and not a question. So, with that, I will, no one in the room? Is there any public comment online? This is highly surprising to me, but that's okay. I live in this zoning world a lot. I just would have expected some comments, but. So, bringing it back to council for discussion.
I'll just thank staff for the work on this, to kind of future-proof us to changes at the state level. I know it's hard to keep up with from experience, and am very supportive of, just make density bonus easier, building easier, as well as put more of this into the sort of ministerial review, as it should be an objective decision made by staff that doesn't necessarily need to come to us. And I'm happy to make a motion when we reach that time.
Leslie, I will say thank you for the updates. Thank you for the presentation. Personally, professionally, I really don't like referencing state law. I prefer the local municipal codes to have the regulations. However, living in the world where we're looking at codes all the time, and the state is constantly changing the law, I totally understand, and so I support this effort because it does add clarity. It also, for practitioners, all practitioners need to know what the state said, doesn't matter what the local says. Same thing with definitions. I like the definitions all in one place. But, again, I think because they're so specific for housing, I think it makes sense that they are moved where they are. This is definitely getting into the geeking out on code and municipal language. However, I think my caution, at least in the definitions, is that we have worked in cities that have not updated their zoning in 30 years, and they have definitions all over their municipal code, and they will define the same term three ways. And depending on which department is looking at that term, a townhouse might mean something different. And so, that's always a caution, but I, I have faith in our staff, and I have faith that our code is compact enough that we're not going to have that issue, so. And not seeing any other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we introduce and waive first reading of Ordinance Number 2024-6.
I'll second.
Councilmember Hanson Romero.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Yep.
And Mayor Mickey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, staff, for the presentation. I don't mind if you keep presenting about zoning issues in front of us. Moving on to Item 11, New Business, Designation of Voting Delegates and Alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo. With that, staff is asking that we designate voting delegates and alternative, alternate. Just so everyone knows, I am already registered and planning on attending, so I am happy to be a voting delegate, unless someone else wants to be a voting delegate.
I would say something, but maybe we want to take public comment first.
Oh, sorry. Public comment?
I want to, I want to go.
Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back.
I guess, to do in one motion, does anybody, well, I'll move that Mayor Mickey be our voting delegate, be Albany's voting delegate.
Seconded.
We also need to choose two alternates? Or do you want to vote on the voting delegate first?
I was thinking, yeah, I was thinking do that and then move on, yeah. Because if the motion should fail, then he would be nominated as an alternate by me. You never know. I don't want to presume.
Okay. Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Lopez.
Yep.
Motion passes.
Does anybody want to be alternate?
Session will be in Long Beach this year, so that if you want, go to Long Beach.
Long Beach is fun.
They've got a beautiful little airport.
I mean, seriously, it's, yeah.
I'd love to go if I can. I'm not sure if I can get the time off work, but I'm happy to serve as an alternate.
Well, then I nominate Councilmember Tiedemann to be an alter, do we have to have two?
No, up to two.
Up to two. Yeah. I think the chance of getting another one is not high. I could be wrong, but for the moment, I will, I will move nominating or making Councilmember Tiedemann an alternate.
I'll second.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I don't actually know if there'll be anything for us to vote on, but we'll find out in a couple of weeks. I think last year, there wasn't actually any items to vote on.
Oh, wow. That's pretty wild, actually.
And with that, we'll move on to Item 12, Council Subcommittee Reports, Councilmember Reports on Appointed Representation of Albany and Other Meetings and Events. I will look towards Councilmember Tiedemann. Any updates?
I don't think I have any.
Council, Vice Mayor Lopez?
No report.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
No meetings since last month.
I think there actually might have been a meeting, but I don't have it logged in my brain. So, I think the commission probably met, Transportation Commission probably met since we last met, but I'll have to reload that in my brain for next time.
I don't have any official meetings to report back on, but I, in my travels, I did travel to Homer, Alaska, which I traveled to quite frequently during the summer, and got to speak with a council member there. It is interesting to see how in a town of 6,000 people with a budget of $21 million, the issues are not that similar to what we have in Albany or in many other cities. They have a very major heisen crisis. They are, 70% of their budget is based on tourism, which is usually based around fishing, and fishing is not very good in that area of Alaska right now. So, they are very nervous, so they have budgetary issues. But their number one issue is housing, like most of the country, and their issue is any housing that gets built almost always is a second or third or fourth home. And construction in Alaska is very expensive. So, not 100% directly related to everything we talk about, but it is important to think about as we, as we do our work, in terms of meeting our housing goals and needs for our community, recognizing that many of the communities that we travel to have even higher pressures, because they are desirable places for people to have second or third homes. Let's see, public comment? I guess I have a note that I'm supposed to ask for public comment, but there's no one in the room, no one online. With that, we'll move on to Item 13, Future Agenda Items. Any items that council members would like to see? Not seeing anything from council members, any, do we take public comment on this? I always forget. Well, I'll ask, do we, any public comment? No one online, okay. Announcements of City Meetings and Events. If you open up today's agenda, you'll see events coming up. We have a very packed September and October coming up. And with that, we'll adjourn today's meeting. Thank you all who took part in today's meeting. If your loved one is experiencing thoughts of suicide, and mental health, or substance use crisis, or any other kind of emotional distress, call or text 988 to speak to a trained crisis specialist. Thank you, everyone. Good night.